We're good.
Hello, welcome to the Jan- January, welcome to November 4th, 2024 Troy City Council Meeting. We ask that you please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. And if you will stand, we will have invocation and pledge allegiance and get on with all our wonderful business. Our Heavenly Father, thank you very, very much for the, uh, we thank you for the wonderful, extended, uh, warm weather, uh, and all the citizens that make it here tonight, our first responders, and, and please look over this council as they go through their business tonight, as well as those that were unable to attend with us today. Uh, in, in your name, keep us in your, in your guidance and guide us well. We thank you very much. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll? Mr. Whitten?
Present.
Mr. Seibert?
Present.
Mr. Phillips?
This is me. Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Westhall?
Here.
Mr. Pierce?
Present.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mrs. Marshall?
Here.
Move to excuse Mr. Phillips.
Second.
Motion to move to excuse Mr. Phillips by Mr. Seibert, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westhall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips is excused.
Thank you. Wait, you want to do the award first?
Yes.
Okay. We have a, our, our quarterly, or third quarter rookie award, and the mayor will be going to present that at this time.
Well, before he runs away. Besides them, it's a great way to ensure and protect the environment to conserve our natural resources. So thank you to all of you, teaching your kids how to recycle. Thank you, guys. Thanks for everything you've done. Thank you very much. Thank you. 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 All right, that brings us to tonight. We're going to have a public hearing. The public hearing and the comments will be based upon the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that adult-use cannabis operators-
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, we have the summary of the minutes yet.
I just asked you, she told me about hearing.
What, sorry, I thought you said that you were ready for the presentation of the, a public hearing.
I am.
Okay.
But he says we're doing minutes first.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I get a lot of practice tonight.
Okay.
Could you please read the minutes?
Minutes of council, October 21st, 2024. Committee reports. Committee reports. Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that there be a public hearing on prohibiting adult-use cannabis operators. They also recommended that legislation be prepared extending the moratorium on the applications for, for operators. Committee recommended that legislation be prepared to take ownership of four vacant parcels. Finance Committee recommended that legislation be prepared for the routine adjustment of some fees to be effective in January of 2025, and recommended legislation be approved for the 2025 payment to the Miami County Public Health of $412,192.87. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended that there be a contract with boom ball construction for the design-built construction of a new park maintenance building. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared for the design of the streetscape program with an agreement with LJB of Mimasburg, Ohio. Resolution number R-57, 2024, agreement with FOP, Ohio Labor Council Troy Police Captains, was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-58, 2024, agreement with Miami County General Health, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-59, fees for various services, any adjustments in January, was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-60, 2024, design-built contract, boom ball construction, first reading and adopted. Resolution R-61, 2024, downtown safety and streetscape renovation project design, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-43, 2024, fixing salaries for police captains for 2024, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-44, 2024, salaries and wages for police captains was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-45, 2024, extending moratorium regarding adult cannabis operators, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-46, 2024, accept transfer of four nonproductive vacant parcels, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-47, 2024, amending some chapters, some sections of chapter 141, benefit provisions of employees, was given first reading and adopted. Following comments, council adjourned at 7:50 PM.
Move to accept the minutes as read.
Motion to accept the minutes by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westhall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Now we're on the hearing. All right. Public hearing tonight is on the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that adult-use cannabis operators be prohibited in the city of Troy. If you want to make comments pro or con to that, please come to the podium, give Mrs. Knight your name and address, and you may have your say.
Hello, members of the council, I'm Susan Justice at 845 Cartwright Court. I am opposed to marijuana dispensaries. I'm a retired RN. I'm very concerned about the risks of marijuana, such as, uh, today's marijuana is stronger. It's three times the concentration it was 25 years ago. There's a 1 in 10 risk of people who use that will become addicted. The CDC is now saying, recent research shows that 3 in 10 people who use will have a disorder. Um, also, it impairs memory. And this is all according to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration of the government. Impairing memory, using marijuana can affect memory, learning, concentration, and attention. Other effects include difficulty with thinking and problem-solving. It can cause permanent IQ loss, up to eight points that can never be regained. It is particularly harmful for the development, developing brain of teens, uh, affects your performance, it can, it can lead to worse educational outcomes compared with teens who don't use. Um, it can also harm babies. Marijuana, when used in pregnancy, can affect the baby's development. It's linked to lower birth weight, preterm birth, and stillbirth, increased risk of brain and behavioral problems. Driving dangers, people who drive under the influence of marijuana can experience dangerous effects, slower reactions, lame weaving, decreased coordination, difficulty reacting to signals and sounds on the road. I have a friend whose son was using marijuana and just totaled their car this past week. I have a friend whose doctor, um, had a doctor in medical school, was told to use marijuana for its relaxation effects. He was a brilliant man with a brilliant mind, got addicted, ended up losing motivation, and dropped out of med school, never to regain that medical. So, as a nurse, um, our long-term frequent use linked to increased risk of psychosis, schizophrenia.
Mrs. Justice, I, I don't mean to be disrespectful and cut you off, and I'm sure there's all facts, but we're trying to keep the, the comments to, to what the recommendation was from the, from the planning commissions, is whether to have establishments in Troy or not.
Oh.
Which I'm, get the impression, I think we know that, that is correct that you are against having any establishments.
May I make it in a succinct sentence?
Yes.
I am opposed to establishments. Any short-term gain of revenue will be at a long-term cost to the holistic health of individuals.
Okay. And anything that you, that I cut you off on, if you turn that in to Mrs. Knight, she will make sure the council members get it.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
My name is Bradley Bereng, I reside at 105 Crestwood Drive. Before I begin marijuana talks, I'm going to throw two numbers before you that I want you to keep in back of your mind, 53 and 47. I am against any prohibition. What I am for is control. If we can control where the cannabis dispensaries go, that is the better way to go. It, it troubles me that we have, we just heard from Mrs. Justice, who wanted to highlight all the negatives of marijuana, when she should know that there are positives to it as well. So, what's the problem? Are we that far back in the 19th century that we don't want to get with the times? Might as well admit that it's here to stay, whether we like it or not. Question I have is, are you willing to, to lose this revenue to other municipalities that have dispensaries? As some of, as I said to some of you on Saturday, and some of you made the comments on Saturday, city of Pickle right now is utilizing $400,000 to $600,000 in revenue that they're putting towards their parks. And yet, we are wanting to borrow $14 million to fix our parks here in the city of Troy, where we could be having the steady revenue to fix our parks. Hmm, novel idea, isn't it? So these are just things I think you should think about. And oh, by the way, that 53-47 that I mentioned, that's the margin by which issue two passed in the city of Troy. So are you all willing to go against the voters? I would think not.
Anyone else?
My name is Alex Shaker, I'm at 1004 East Franklin Street. Uh, to members of city council, I'm here to show my support in allowing the adult-use cannabis operators in testing laboratories, and ask that you do not ban these practices. Um, I can't understand why you would want to ban them within our city unless it's due to, uh, outguide, or outdated and misguided moral views on what weed really is, and how the majority of people actually use it. Um, unless you are being persuaded by 50-year-old propaganda created, uh, by America's war on drugs, that we've won so well, um, this is not the way to, uh, go about these things. You are going to lose out on revenue, like the previous gentleman said, as well as additional jobs that will be in our city. Um, and I just want to point out that the city allows dozens upon dozens of bars, restaurants, and stores that all sell alcohol, a thing that is arguably worse than marijuana ever has been. In fact, the CDC reports 30,000 people last year died from just alcohol overdose. That's not from accidents or, uh, any type of other thing that might have happened while intoxicated, that's just overdoses. Do you know how many overdoses of marijuana they reported? Zero. This stuff is healthier than alcohol, but we allow alcohol because it's, oh, I'm sorry, because it's socially acceptable, but the America's war on drugs has created a socially non-acceptable, uh, substance, and I suggest that we do not allow the past to dictate what the future could bring for the city and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Steve Henrickson at 975 Dickerson. Uh, quite frankly, I'm not going to be a customer that this, this ever gets passed. Same time is, you know, what's the harm? Right now, it's very legal to sell alcohol and cigarettes. I'll make a better case to go to ban cigarettes and alcohol than marijuana. If you're going to loo, if you're going to let the facts drive you, let the facts drive you. More adults get killed, and get killed daily, by making a choice to smoke cigarettes. And every time I see a kid walk down the street smoking a cigarette legally, I feel like smack him. I don't know if I would feel the same way if I saw some kid smoking a joint, because I don't know if the joint will kill him. I know tobacco will. So I'd like you to open up your eyes. I know it's a financial gain for the city, but I, I really don't want to mention that too much, but let's ta, keep it in context of what we're dealing with here, okay? Some emotional issues, I understand the emotion, but don't let the emotions stay in the way of making a logical decision and allowing other killing things continue to be sold in Ohio, or in Troy. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, thank you for a few minutes. My name is Christina Ryan Claypool. I'm a resident of Troy, 2851 Huntington Drive in Troy, Ohio. Um, I think also, I would like to say, I'm speaking on behalf of my husband, who is a retired public school superintendent. Um, we have spent the last 20 years of our marriage, uh, supporting kids, so that's why I'm here tonight. My question to you is, what kind of community do you want Troy, Ohio to be? Um, do you want one that fosters a culture of being proactive, to prevent addiction, especially among our youth? One that respects, protects, and works alongside law enforcement to create a safe environment and, uh, possibly avoid driving hazards? I, I think that I have probably a little bit more background with marijuana than some of these people. I am a recovering drug addict, and, um, I have been very honest and open about that in, of trying to, uh, prevent kids. My own struggle with drug addiction, marijuana was very much a gateway drug for me, and as we say in recovery, it's a DOC, it was a drug of choice. So it was very difficult for me when, uh, issue two was passed, because I am, with the grace of God, one day at a time, recreational use of marijuana led to much heavier drugs for me, eventually narcotics, and, um, I was just blessed in 1986 to be on a psychiatric ward. Unfortunately, I did have an opioid relapse 17 years ago. But from, uh, but I have that much cleaning time, with God's grace. But from, what I guess what I'm saying to you is recreational marijuana is what we're talking about tonight, we're not talking about medicinal marijuana, we're not talking about alleviating people's pain. I understand when I was in the hospital, in the psychiatric ward, coming off of drug addiction, my immune system was not functioning. That was in thanks to extremely heavy marijuana use. So I, I guess that's something we have to think about. I want to refer briefly to the, just the Pickwa issue. Pickwa does have revenue, and this is all about money. I asked a director of a nonprofit in a county, several counties away, a drug addiction nonprofit, what recreational marijuana was about, she said it's all about making money. Pickwa is getting that revenue. You know what else? I saw Pickwa in a, in a, um, article this week, one of the 20 cities in Ohio that you do not want to live in, okay? So that's what we have to face, and I think, again, my question to you is just very simple. It's very simple, because opponents of issue two, at the time Dayton Dally News stated, they argued that marijuana poses health threats, legalizing, and this is coming from public health, mental health advocates, law enforcement, business groups, and others, poses threats, legalizing it will enrich marijuana companies. There we go, that's who's making money, marijuana companies, while exposing children, people we have fought for, for 20 years of our lives together, increasing the chances of crime and workplace injuries, and creating driving hazards. I was a driving hazard. I was, when I was high on marijuana, I was pulled over by a police officer, thank you God. What kind of community do you want Troy to be, enclosing a community that fosters preventing addiction among our youth, one that respects, protects, and works alongside law enforcement to create a safe environment regarding crime and possible driving hazards? Thank you for caring for a community, I believe you all do. God bless you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Amber Shaffer, I live on 1004 East Franklin Street. I am for having a dispensary here. I, um, am a recovering alcoholic. Hilarious that we have so many bars in here, that I could literally go to one at any time. It's very legal, you know? So, um, that's a thing. Um, here are my things, though. There are tons of bars, and that's okay, why not a dispensary? Where a person literally gets, in the dispensary, where a person literally gets a product and then leaves, unlike a bar. Things weed can do versus alcohol have way more benefits in, with helping pain management and mental health benefits. The money made from the dispensary will actually go back into the community, giving more money for things Troy needs. Plus, it'll bring more business to the city as well, more people to go to restaurants around the area, hence bringing more patrons to businesses. The business, the benefits of people having access to weed are greater than alcohol. There are already laws in place to discourage being high and driving. I feel that we need to stop vilifying marijuana and let the people of Troy have a dispensary. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the council, my name is Steve Justice, I'm a practicing attorney here in Miami County, and, uh, I live here in Troy. It was my pleasure, back in 2017, to be one of the founders of what is now called the Miami County Drug-Free Task Force. At that time, we were dealing with addiction to fentanyl and other, other opiate-related drugs that were literally killing people. And I, uh, I spent some 700 hours that year and the year following that, working with 40 different people around the Miami County area to try to address drug addiction in our community. We did not have sufficient resources, we didn't have sufficient people who were addressing it, it was a major, major problem. I will tell you that I see what growing in our community today is an increasing amount of addiction, not just from opiates, but from cannabis. I not only took part in founding the Drug-Free Task Force, but I represent a number of federal criminal defendants, and many of them are addicted to marijuana. They, they have been smoking marijuana since they were a teenager, and it's as strong as any addiction that you can imagine. They can't seem to make it, make a day without having to smoke a marijuana. And part of the reason for that is not based on data that my colleague sitting here indicated is 50 years old, but it's based on data and studies that are coming out now. Over 30 states have passed laws in some form that are allowing for the dispensing of marijuana. And we are relatively speaking, in terms of the length of study, still in some early stages, but what we are seeing is frankly alarming, absolutely alarming. There is no doubt that the studies are showing that where communities have opened up dispensaries, it has led to a, a higher correlation of, of the use of cannabis, not just by adults, but by children. Kids who are influenced not only by secondhand smoke, let's say, but also by the, the example that's being set by their parents. It's highly, highly contradictory for us to, on the one hand, tout and support a Miami County Drug-Free Task Force, and then within a matter of years, start opening up dispensaries, giving out what is a schedule-one controlled substance in our society. We probably, you may not realize that marijuana is still federal, you know, against, uh, the federal law. You can still be charged and convicted and serve prison time for possession of marijuana and for the sale of marijuana. So despite the fact that there are states that have allowed it, as the voters did in this particular state, it still violates federal law. And no one, absolutely no one sitting here tonight, either in front of me or behind me, can predict what the federal government is going to do about that issue in the future. And if they tell you they can, they're wrong. It is against the law in this land. It's still against the law, and for the foreseeable future, I think it will continue to be. Why? Because the cannabis that we're dealing with today is not the cannabis that I dealt with or that I was around in the 1970s. I'm old enough to have been a teenager during that timeframe. And the, the concentration of tetrahydrocannabinol, which is the active psychotic, active, psychoactive ingredient of marijuana, is now much, much higher than it was in the 1970s. In 1970, it was less than 2%. By 1995, it was 4%. By the year 2017, it was 17%. Today, the figures are somewhere between 17 and 28%. So we've seen an increasing rise in the amount of the psychoactive component of marijuana. Now we're seeing the ubiquitous spread of it across the country, and we're seeing that the population of people that it is hurting the most are young people, because there's no doubt about, no doubt about the fact that their brains are quite susceptible to this. It literally alters brain structure, the prefrontal cortex, and has led to all kinds of medical difficulties, certainly an increase in psychoses. Where dispensaries have increased in communities, there's been a correlate rise in people presenting in emergency rooms with psychotic events. Many of these people are kids. Not, not only that, but they're also presenting with heart problems. There are kids who literally, within an hour of, of, of ingesting or smoking marijuana, are literally having heart attacks and going to emergency rooms because of the effect of this. So I guess, if for no other reason, common sense would say, given, given what is happening around the country, and it, and listen, I, it's all here in far better terms than I can explain, this is an August 2023 article from the Yale School of Medicine, the call, talking about the, the rising THC concentrations.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Justice is the previous speaker. That, that's great. If you, that information, would you please give to Mrs. Knight, and the council will, will get it?
And if I had read a word of it, your comment would probably have more meaning to me, I'd be happy to give it to them. I haven't read a single word of this article yet.
We'll give you another minute.
I'm just trying to, trying to explain why I'm very much-
I understand, but what, what we're here for comments for is, is for the dispensaries or against dispensaries. And, and everybody that's presented stuff has, has fantastic information that, that these people need to have before they decide yes or no.
Including you.
I don't have a vote.
Well, it's good for you to hear this.
It is.
Yeah.
So, uh, but will they get it? I will get it as well.
Yeah. So I, I'm, I'm going to hand the article to them.
Okay, I'll give you a minute to either summarize or read the top highlights you got in that thing, before you give it to Mrs. Knight, if you'd like.
having heart attacks and going to emergency rooms because of the effect of this. So I guess, if for no other reason, common sense would say, given what is happening around the country, and listen, it's all here in far better terms than I can explain. This is an August 2023 article from the Yale School of Medicine, talking about the rising THC concentrations.
Mr. Justice.
Yes.
Justice, the previous speaker. That's great. If you, that information, would you please give to Mrs. Knight, and the council will get it?
And if I had read a word of it, it would probably have more meaning to me. I'd be happy to give it to them. I haven't read a single word of this article yet.
We'll give you another minute.
I'm just trying to, trying to explain why I'm very much.
I understand, but what we're here for comments for is for the dispensaries or against dispensaries. And everybody that's presented stuff has fantastic information that these people need to have before they decide yes or no.
Including you.
I don't have a vote.
Well, it's good for you to hear this.
It is. So, but will they get it? I will get it as well.
Yeah. So I'm going to hand the article to them.
Okay. I'll give you a minute to either summarize or read the top highlights you got in that thing before you give it to Mrs. Knight, if you'd like to.
The argument that because Pickwa is doing this, or some other community in Ohio is doing this, reminds me of conversations that I had with my teenage sons when they were 14, 15, or 16, and they would come to me with some sort of a proposition. It sounded something like this. Johnny's parents allow him to do this, so why won't you allow us to do it? And my answer, of course, was because you're not Johnny's brother or sister. You're not in that family. You're in this family, and we don't do that. We don't live that way. We live by a different ethic. We're not going to live off of money, in other words. We don't want to live off of money in this community that is literally going to destroy people's lives. People who get addicted to marijuana and they try to go get help, often their insurance won't pay for it because it's not an opiate, or it's not cocaine or something else, but they're just as addicted. Tremendous costs to the future of our people, to our community, and to the young people who are affected by this. If we allow dispensaries in this community, so I would ask for you not to permit dispensaries to be set up in this community.
Mr. Rosell, can I ask him a quick question?
Sure.
Mr. Justice, maybe I'm confused. So the article that you're giving us?
Yes.
Is that the factual citations for the increase in emergency room visits?
Yes.
For dispensaries?
Yes. That data is in here.
Okay. So that's what, this will be the article if we want to go back and review?
Well, there's, it's not just this one. This is just one of the latest ones from the Yale School of Medicine from August of 2023.
I understand where it came from. My question is, there are three different sites. You said communities that had dispensaries had increases in heart attacks?
Yep.
Psychosis?
Yep.
And I forget there was one previous to that. My only question is, where did that data come from? From that article?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you're going to give that, he's going to give that to everybody, correct?
That's what Mr. Rosell asked me to do.
That's my suggestion, if.
Yeah. I'm happy to give it to my colleagues, and they can copy it and everybody can read.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is George Woolley. I live at 236 North Elm Street here in Troy. I'm a former pothead, off and on, from about like 1970, for about 15 years. I'm against, I'm against a dispensary. Psychoactive drugs like marijuana impair, impair a person not only when they're high, I'm speaking firsthand experience here, but it damages your ability to make sound judgments even when you're not high. It has a residual effect. The chemicals stay in your body, and it impairs your brain. It resulted in me making many bad neural choices that had an extremely negative effect on my career and my marriage and personal life. And I never would have thought of it as being a lucky thing, but I do now, and that is that the law intervened on my behalf through several interactions, and I was, as a result, made sober, against my will. Fortunately for me at this time in my life, I was also searching for the meaning of life, and Jesus said, "Seek and ye will find," and so I've been blessed ever since by my faith in the Word Jesus Christ. If I hadn't completely severed myself from the illicit drug usage, I would have remained a slave to it, and I don't think I'd be alive to this day. I really don't. Users claim that marijuana relaxes them, well, it spaces them out in a schizophrenic state. This is characterized by emotional blunting, intellectual deterioration, social isolation, disorganized speech and behavior, and delusions. So if you want to relax, I would recommend just taking a good old-fashioned nap. Finally, let me just say that dispensing these harmful substances in our charming little town here can only lead to problems, not only for the individual users, but for those who must assist them in their impairment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
James Lee, I live at 225 South Short Street. I grew up in Kentucky where alcohol was legal and there were areas where it was prohibited. We had dry cities, we had dry counties. What you got was everyone around these dry areas was selling it. So all the dry counties got were all the problems that they thought they were going to have and none of the revenue. Right now, you're going to have it sold all around you. Why not? I mean, you know, you're going, if you think you're going to have problems, you're going to have problems. I don't believe you are. As a rule, most people that smoke are fairly docile, fairly decent people. I've smoked off and on for 55 years. I mean, not regularly, but off and on, and I haven't been a burden to society, but what I am saying is whether you're for it or against it, you've got it sold all around you. It's legal in the state, so if you think you're going to have problems, you're going to have problems, and you won't have any of the revenue. So why not sell it and get some of the revenue? I don't think you'll have problems, but thank you.
Thank you.
First, I would like to say, in reference to Mr. Justice's comments about the health problems, I would give you this little story that my son told me a couple weeks ago. He is teaching a speech class to freshmen in one of the colleges that he's working with, and he likes to involve his students so that they feel more comfortable when it comes time to give their speeches. So he has a discussion period at the beginning of each of his classes, and he was talking at one about warning his kids, the dispensaries, you need to be careful, that if you don't know what you're doing and you just go in, you're asking for trouble. And he said particularly, he said, there is, it's big business. There's money all over the place. And he said, so you've got suppliers from California, he said platinum vape supplier from California, mass produces, sends it to all these legal dispensaries. He said, very, very toxic. Don't buy it. Little girl says, I know. I got a cartridge, two hits, and I'm not right. They take me to the emergency room. She's schizophrenic, psychotic break. She's in the hospital for two days. That was not cannabis. That was the toxins that were in the product. If you have a dispensary here, you need to make sure that the stuff that they put in there is thoroughly tested, just like with medical. It has to be tested. The problems with the mental, the breakdowns, whatever, between the herbicides, the pesticides, the solvents that they use to clean the herbicides and pesticides out of it, the way they process, the isolates and the distillates, all those chemicals, just like when they had the problem with the vaping, and everybody was getting sick and dying, whatever, it's all in the process. So if you're going to have a dispensary, make sure that the product is legally tested, that it's accurate, and that it is clean. That said, I agree with the majority votes, we're a democracy, that's the way things go. And cannabis is a big, big business. Any big business that brings this much money is going to have the run of the show. There's no stopping it. What I would like to say, and I know you're tired of people reading things, so I don't have to read all of this, but this is an article from the Detroit News, all right? And it is from 2021. They legalized recreational in 2018. So this is from, this is basically an interview with Chief James Craig of the Detroit Police Department. And he basically said that it's supply and demand, that there's a higher demand for black market marijuana because it's cheaper. He goes on to say that at this time, there were no venues in Detroit where you could purchase recreational marijuana legally. Now, I was up there before my medical was there, and they're like three on the block. So I don't understand, I mean, I'm surprised. But what he said was, and I don't know if this will go with our area, but this is Detroit, that illegal marijuana transactions often end in violence, who estimated that 60% of the recent shootings and homicides in the city involve black market marijuana sales. The chief said he noticed a spike in violence at the end of 2019, which he said has carried over to this year of 2020. Okay, there have been 17, oh, you don't need all those statistics, but what he did was he went to his precinct investigators and his special response teams, and they said that most of these shootings and homicides came from illegal marijuana sales. That was kind of surprising. My staff tells me there are more shootings involved involving sales of black market marijuana than any other drug, including cocaine and heroin. I don't know. This is from the city of Detroit. I was kind of shocked at kind of what they were saying here. And to combat that, what they've done is they've gone after people who carry the illegal guns because they can't really police the possession of the marijuana. So, I don't know. It's pros and cons. On the plus side, it's going to happen. There's going to be marijuana people buying it out there, whether you want it to be legal or whether you want it black market. It's kind of like prohibition didn't work with alcohol. And yes, addictions and people wanting to withdraw. I have a friend who went through quit cigarettes, cold turkey. She had two major withdrawals that she had to go through. One was prescription OxyContin, and her doctors had her going down to the methadone clinic downtown with the junkies to wean her off of the prescription drug. She also said that the worst withdrawal she ever went through was prescription Xanax. She said that's the worst withdrawal ever of all the drugs. So addiction is addiction. People are going to be addicted to all kinds of things. If you want to say everything that causes an addiction is wrong, people have empty holes in their lives. They fill them with things, you know? An addictive personality is going to, until they find something to fill that hole, they're going to fill it with something. You're not going to stop that. If it's not, it'll be a drug of some sort. It'll be bath salts, it'll be whatever. Might as well do this where you can police it and make sure that they're getting a safe product and that we don't encourage black market sales, because they're going to use marijuana. It's countrywide. You're not going to stop that freight train. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Claypool, 2851 Huntington Drive. I wasn't, I didn't come tonight to speak initially, but then, after hearing the diversified comments that were being made, I would like to talk just briefly, from being a school educator and a superintendent of three school districts, putting my life, career in a position where I help moms and dads, like you and the people standing behind us, try to get the most for their children so that they can not only have a good education, a good opportunity to become strong young adults and fulfill some career goals and some enjoyable things in their lives, have a wonderful time in their lives, that they can actually build something for the future. But as I listen and as I've heard different stories about the marijuana situation, and from being a part of a school district where there was a lot of information about it several years ago, I would just like to say, over the decades, our culture has changed. The things that only seniors and adults did years ago, younger people began doing, and after a while, it became more and more prevalent. We see, back in the day, kids did not use guns, they did not steal cars. 14-year-olds did not rob cars and steal them and get caught speeding 120 miles an hour down the road. What I'm saying is, I'm not for the dispenser, but what I want to say is this. Do we want to, as a town, Troy, with the reputation that we have and our stance that we believe in for families and for our community, for the sake of some dollars, do we want to have dispensers and visibly to the state, to the community, anybody watching, take a stance and say, this may come into our town, and we may have students who, maybe in high school, but maybe before long, it'll be junior high, maybe it'll be even less because that's what's happened with vaping, that's what's happened with drinking, that's what's happening with a lot of things. Do we, as Troy, want to stand aside and say, we're going to take a stand, and we're not going to incorporate and encourage the use of marijuana and watch it do what it's going to happen everywhere else? It may come to our area, that is very true. But do you, as a councilperson, do I, as somebody who live in the community, do I want that on my conscience? Do you want that on your conscience, that for the sake of collecting some dollars and maybe throwing some money at some parks, throwing some money, doing some things, do you and I want to lay our head on our pillow at night if we read in the newspaper where an 11-year-old boy or a 12-year-old girl began smoking parents marijuana? Like, sometimes they'll get into a cabinet and they'll get their medicine. Kids will talk, kids will pull things together and say, look what I got from my mom and dad's closet. As a superintendent, as a former principal, especially a teacher, I heard some of those things over the years and had to make a school-wide decision as to what I would do. My wife and I are proud to be living in Troy. We haven't always lived here, but we've always admired and appreciated the reputation that Troy has, and I would just like to say, condemning no one for anyone's personal opinion, I would like to see Troy not participate with the dispensaries, because what if having the dispensary, or what if standing up for having something like that because of making money? And what if your grandson, or your granddaughter, or somebody very, very close to you decided that because of the ease and the ability to have it in our community, decided to try it? And then they try it some more, and then they try it until they can't make themselves stop. I just want to say, over the years, I've seen students who wanted to change in many things and many aspects in their life, but they did not know how and they could not. And I don't want to see our children, our students, in an emergency room, starting at a very small or young age, junior high, even high school, and not be able to have a chance at life to be successful and to do what you, mom, dad, uncle, grandpa would like to have them done. I would just like to say thank you for the couple minutes you allowed me to speak and share my opinion. I respect everything everyone said tonight, and I respect all their own personal opinions. But if you look at our culture, and you see where we were in the 30s, the 40s, the 50s, the 70s, the 90s, and now in the 2020s, let me ask you something. What are we going to do to try to help make it stop and does Troy want to participate in that and help grease the slide for maybe our local culture falling even further? Just want to say thank you very much for your patience, for listening to my opinion and my request, and to those listening, I hold nothing against anybody for any stance that they take. I just do not want to see us contribute to anything happening to our children that could take place because it's been convenient in the home, moms and dads have it, aunts and uncles have it, and all of a sudden, they leave it here, they leave it there, they forget about it because they're out for the night, and then the nine-year-old begins to smoke it or take it. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
And we're happy to be a part of Troy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Madison Hickman. I'm at four to Lincoln Avenue. I also did not plan to speak for this evening, but I feel like a lot of you have been frustrated, and I think a lot of people have been frustrated, because we're not here to debate whether we should legalize marijuana or not. That's not the issue at hand. The issue at hand is whether we should allow any sort of marijuana operations in the city of Troy. Obviously, I'm the only person, so I have seen lots of people my age, younger, while I was growing up, people older than me, who have all used cannabis throughout their lives. If you're going to use it, you're going to use it one way or another. I remember when I was twenty-one and first allowed to venture through the bars of Troy, and I was not, I'm not originally from this area, I'm from a much smaller area, and I was told who the drug dealers in town were. I would never walk up to them, I was terrified of that, but I found it interesting that people knew who the drug dealers were. So, if they want it, they're going to find a way to get it. At this point, I think we need a regulation. This is our opportunity to set ordinances for how many dispensaries or other operations we are allowed to have in town, and what those rules look like. I just made the comment to my boyfriend, gosh, a couple weeks ago, I feel like there's a new tobacco shop in town every other month. You know, there's one being built across from Kroger currently, and tobacco is a much bigger issue, and I see the children on the square every day, smoking vapes and cigarettes and leaving all the trash along the square. And so they're finding a way to get it, but we don't limit how many tobacco shops are in the city. So, that is what I think about, and that's what I think we should be talking about at this time as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think ten minutes away is-
Name and address, please.
Close enough. What's that?
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. Matt Bigelow, 543 Robin Hood. So I think ten minutes away is close enough. I don't see any great needs for it, and if we're talking about bars and tobacco shops being a problem, okay, shutting those down or taking them away if those are an issue to the community as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
My name is Chuck Posley, 1790 Greenbrier. Good evening. I live here in Troy. I personally, just real quick, I've known people close to me, family and other people, whose lives have been wrecked by marijuana, and their families have been split because of it, and so, because I have had negative impact on my family because of marijuana, I'm against it. Thank you.
Once, twice. These comments will be closed. Committee reports.
You tell them the next step.
Oh, yeah, this will go back to the committee with all the input that we've got, and I will go back to, where'd it go, uh-
November thirteenth.
It'd be the twenty-fifth.
November thirteenth.
Huh?
November thirteenth.
Oh, I'm sorry. What, no, you're not going to be here twenty-fifth, right?
I'm not going to be here the eleventh.
Okay.
But that's, the only thing we're going to be doing the eleventh is the budget, is my understanding, but I won't be able to create, so the next one after that's the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, but we were, we were going to schedule that for the thirteenth on Wednesday, I didn't think you wanted to wait.
I can, I could probably be here on the thirteenth.
Okay, thirteenth is-
That's why I thought we landed-
Okay.
So you're going to have a council, a committee meeting on the thirteenth, on Wednesday the thirteenth?
Wednesday night, yeah.
That covers all the input and any other comments from the committee then, we'll make a recommendation to council, and then it will come back to council. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Right. Today's committee reports. Mr. Seaver, you got any?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Finance.
Finance Committee does have one report concerning the sale of surplus items. On October twenty-eighth, this committee met to review the request that some excess public property be declared surplus and offered for sale. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to declare the follower, to declare the list attached of vehicles and equipment as surplus, and authorize to sell these items, and they will be available on gov.deals, is that correct?
Govdeals.com.
Govdeals.com. And that's respectfully submitted by myself, Mr. Twist, and Ms. Marshall.
Oh.
I know, I think that was-
I just read the wrong damn report.
Okay. I was like, go ahead. I'm looking for it, I'm thinking, I don't know.
Apparently that was community partnership report. Now we'll go to finance. Would you like to read the finance report?
I mean, I don't, I need to know. I mean, I can read your finance report, but-
You were excited. Excited about the sales of you-
Put those away. Put those down.
That looks like we've been taking advantage of dispensers.
Hold on, I gotta find my report now.
What have you been spoken to, I thought?
I had-
I mean, do we just want to go with that one, because you're already ready?
I need to have the cover report.
I don't have a financial report.
Okay.
I don't have a list of, so that's why I'm-
I mean, it is.
Any questions on the report to talk, Rick?
Before Kristy. Just say your voice, though. I appreciate it, thank you.
The finance has no report tonight.
Thank you.
Parks does.
Yeah.
Okay, that's me. I'm taking the place of the Mr. Phillips.
Can you read it?
You want to read it?
You are not taking our parks, Mrs. Westfall is here.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
No.
I don't care.
She's here, she's the chairman.
I don't know.
Read it. No, it's Amber. Out of parks, yeah.
Out of the parks.
What's this? Oh, my God.
Where's the rec?
Quiet!
Streets, I'm sorry.
Quiet! Mrs. Westfall, please read the park's report.
Okay. The Parks and Rec Committee met on October twenty-eighth regarding the recommendation of the park, Board of Park Commission, that the trail in the Robinson Reserve of the Paul G. Duke Park be named the Margaret Duke Trail. We concur with the assessment of the board that such naming meets the criteria set forth in council's policy for naming of city facilities, and it's the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to name the trail in the Robinson Reserve of the Paul G. Duke Park, the Margaret Duke Trail. Respectfully submitted, Kristy Marshall, Jeff Witten, and myself as chair, Susan Westfall.
Anybody have questions on the park and the trail? Seeing that, now we will go to yours for-
Streets and sidewalks.
Streets and sidewalks. It's your subbing for Mr. Phillips.
Thank you. I apologize for the confusion all the way around on these things. Okay, this is the Streets and Sidewalk Committee. The committee members, Westfall and Phillips, met October twenty-eighth regarding increasing the authorization, for the authorization for the Broadford Bridge, State Route Forty-One East rehabilitation project from two-hundred-and-sixty thousand to two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. The additional cost is due to the concrete on the north side of the bridge deteriorating more than the one bid, the pre-bid review and analysis could indicate, and requiring additional work by the contractor to make the safety repairs. It is a recommendation of the committee that the legislation be prepared, amending resolution number R-14-2024, increasing the authorization for the Broadford Bridge, State Route Forty-One East rehabilitation project to the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. This committee supports emergency legislation so that there is no delay to the project. This was respectfully submitted by Jeffrey Schelling, myself, Susan Westfall, and Mr. Phillips, Bobby Phillips as chairman.
Any questions on that? I believe you have a second one?
I do. Okay, again, this is from the Streets and Sidewalk Committee. On October twenty-eighth, committee members Westfall and Phillips met to consider recommending the resolution of necessity for Phase Sixteen of the sidewalk replacement, which is a missing gap program. Phase Sixteen includes approximately twenty-one parcels where sidewalk gaps have been identified. These properties owners will be given a date by which a permit for the work must be made, and then thereafter, the repairs will be made by the city. It is a recommendation of the committee that the resolution of necessity be prepared for Phase Sixteen of the sidewalk replacement, missing gap program. And again, this will be respectfully submitted by myself, Jeff Schelling, Susan Westfall, and Bobby Phillips as chair.
Do we have questions for about that?
I have a question, Mr. Tiller, with the gap program in general. How do we decide what gaps we work on or go after? I mean, this is obviously out west Main Street since we're doing construction.
Yes, and well, there's a variety of factors that go in every year, whether it's missing gap or if it's the repair program. So we've mapped out all of the missing gaps, we've then compared it to the timing of future projects, so that we could kind of, you know, we can coordinate those, not do one before the other, and time it all accurately. Since this is the first year of a gap program, we wanted to try to find a concentration to start with, not knowing, you know, how much that would cost, because it is more expensive. You only see twenty-one parcels. Well, those twenty-one parcels require all sidewalk that's not there. It's not just replacing certain squares of sidewalks. And to, before we can get to that point, we do have to do some significant surveying work, and so the timing is a little slower as well. So all those factors go into consideration.
I guess personally, my question kind of drifts into well-established neighborhoods that we have that have gaps in them, that may not, are not going to have, like a Main Street project or a bridge project that we can hook it up to. Are we looking at those as well as the projects we're doing, and just not the replacement of three or four squares in front of somebody's house?
Yes.
To generate a gap project?
Yes, and, you know, at the same time, we've got sections of the community that it's been over twenty years since we did a review, and so some of them may be ready for another inspection, and as we do that, then we would include any gaps there. We want to be sensitive to the kind of bidding that we would get, and that's why we want to concentrate it as much as possible and not spread a contractor all over the community where they have to mobilize, re-mobilize, and we lose the economies of scale.
Moving on, did I miss anybody that had a committee report? All right. Moving on to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, would you please read Resolution R-62-2024?
Resolution number R-62-2024. Resolution naming the walking trail in the Robinson Reserve and the Paul G. Duke Park as the Margaret Duke Trail. This has been recommended for approval by the Board of Park Commissioners, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules? Second. Move to suspend the reading, rules of the readings by Mr. Witten, seconded by Mr. Schelling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Move to adopt? Second. Motion to adopt a resolution by Mr., excuse me, Mr. Witten, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Moving on, Mrs. Knight, would you please read Resolution sixty-three, R-63-2024?
Resolution number R-63-2024. Resolution, amending resolution number R-14-2024, increasing the authorization for the Director of Public Services and Safety to enter into a contract for the Broadford Bridge, State Route Forty-One East Rehabilitation Project, and declaring an emergency. This increases the authorization to two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second. Motion to suspend the readings by Mrs. Westfall, seconded by Mr. Schelling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Move to adopt? Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Witten, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Would you please read Resolution R-64-2024, please?
Resolution declaring the necessity of Phase Sixteen of the sidewalk replacement and missing gap program in the city of Troy, Ohio. This was discussed this evening, this is the first reading.
Move to suspend. Second. Motion to suspend by Mr. Schelling, seconded by Mr. Witten. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second. Motion to adopt by Mrs. Westfall, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O-48-2024?
Ordinance number O-48-2024. Ordinance declaring municipally-owned personal property is no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the sale of such property. This will authorize the sale of a small list of vehicles and equipment, first reading.
Move to suspend? Second. Move to suspend by Mr. Twist, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Witten, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Move to adopt? Second. Adopt for Mr. Witten, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you very much. Are we going with Chief or the Communications first? Is there any communications?
No, sir.
We've asked Chief McKinney, or I have asked Chief McKinney to come tonight to review what laws and regulations we do have on the books about bikes, e-bikes, skateboards, or whatever, that since we are in our comprehensive plan and looking at safety issues and everything else downtown, he will review what we have on the books right now, and then we can ask him any questions.
I believe this discussion was about homelessness?
Homelessness?
Discuss homelessness was what I was asked to talk about tonight.
Then the Patrick kind of messed me up, because I wanted to talk about what you sent me as a response to the bikes.
I mean, I can briefly-
This is the first reading.
Move to suspend? Second. Motion to suspend by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Widdon. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, would you please read Ordinance O. forty-eight, twenty-two-four?
Ordinance number O. forty-eight, twenty-two-four. Ordinance declaring municipally-owned personal property is no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the sale of such property. This will authorize the sale of a small list of vehicles and equipment. First reading.
Move to suspend? Second. Move to suspend by Mr. Twist, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Move to adopt? Second. Motion to adopt by Mrs. Westfall, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, would you please read Ordinance O. forty-eight, twenty-two-four?
Ordinance number O. forty-eight, twenty-two-four. Ordinance declaring municipally-owned personal property is no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the sale of such property. This will authorize the sale of a small list of vehicles and equipment. First reading.
Move to suspend? Second. Move to suspend by Mr. Twist, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Move to adopt? Second. Adopt for Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O. forty-eight, twenty-two-four?
Ordinance number O. forty-eight, twenty-two-four. Ordinance declaring municipally-owned personal property is no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the sale of such property. This will authorize the sale of a small list of vehicles and equipment. First reading.
Move to suspend? Second. Move to suspend by Mr. Twist, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Move to adopt? Second. Adopt for Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O. forty-eight, twenty-two-four?
Ordinance number O. forty-eight, twenty-two-four. Ordinance declaring municipally-owned personal property is no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the sale of such property. This will authorize the sale of a small list of vehicles and equipment. First reading.
Move to suspend? Second. Move to suspend by Mr. Twist, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
age. And so I think a big part of it is just educating people about, you know, what you're allowed to do. By the same token, there are gentlemen that ride on the street, on the sidewalks downtown almost daily, were there almost daily, and they have a route they must take, and, and they just go. So I don't know what you can do about that, but I've seen them almost hit pedestrians coming out of shops and, you know, but they're there on a regular basis. So I don't know if it would, what you can do about that, but it's, it's bad.
This complaint, I remember, you know, coming up and us making concerted efforts to try to slow this down and stop it, probably over 15 years ago, and it continues to raise its ugly head. There is signage that was posted, I think it was probably about 15 years ago. Forget the name of the councilman, lived on Colony Park?
Bill Lor.
Bill Lor. Bill Lor. I know he had a lot of issues with this, and we tried to make a very harsh, you know, stance against this, and we wrote a lot of tickets, and there were a lot of complaints.
Yeah, and I, and I tried to tell him, "Hey, you're not supposed to," and he told me what I could do with myself. So, you know, so I tried to be nice about it.
And yeah, I think the other thing they brought up, as far as education, I think one of the people that came to the meeting possibly suggested, "Do the resource officers to get, hit the school kids," so, because they're probably unaware of it, because most of everybody sitting in the room was unaware of the age limits, so, the possibility or...
Oh, definitely. We have posted that before on Facebook with a picture of the signage. Some of the signs still exist that say, "Walk your bike on the downtown streets." And both times, there was a lot of negative feedback on our Facebook page about, you know, "I'm going to ride in the street, I don't care, you know, my child's not going to," you know, and we tried to explain it, that if you're downtown, where there's a heavy pedestrian traffic, or doors that are that close to the sidewalk, you should walk your bike. And if you don't want to walk your bike, then maybe you should avoid the downtown area. And there's roads that you can detour around the downtown area that are very simple to detour. However, it's a, it's a non-stop now.
Do we have signage in the downtown?
There are some signs up, they're not, they're not on every street.
We have them at kind of the edges, but we also have signs on each of the bike racks. They're smaller, but, I mean, we don't want to have them in neon, but.
Just to walk them in.
Well, yeah, maybe increase signage, but I know, social media posts can be great, but just a signage that says something, I don't know if we need to.
We have a lot of sign clutter, and signage gets just kind of faded into the background. People don't pay attention to.
Sign clutter, okay.
Yeah.
I, I remember specifically stopping somebody right next to the sign one time and pointing it out to them, and they didn't pay attention to the sign at all. So, most of those signs, I think there was a concerted effort when those were put up to kind of set the perimeter area around downtown. Now, some of them might have, because of age and where and weather, might not be, might not still be up, but there was a very concerted effort to put those up. Mr. Seaver, did you also mention lights on bicycles?
The comments were high-speed motorized scooters that did not have lights, so not bikes, I, how were the two scooters that were involved in your accidents in the last two days? And then the press release on bikes and the fact that you don't enforce a lot. And then there were some comments about, rant about loose dogs, but we can address that on a different day.
You know, I did pull some numbers today. So far this year, as of this afternoon, our officers have made 5,503 traffic stops. Ward 3 doesn't specifically match the, the East End. It includes other areas, but 641 of those traffic stops, or 14% has been in Ward 3. While that is lower than, you know, the six wards in the city as far as a percentage, I would, I would probably base that upon the amount of traffic volume in Ward 3. I don't think there's nearly as much traffic volume as in Ward 3 as there is in like the Western wards that include West Main Street out by the interstate. We've issued 1,495 citations this year, 3,900 warnings.
3,900 warnings?
Yes.
Okay. Any other immediate bike, bike helmet, bike light questions, and then we'll let him do his homeless report that he was led to believe to talk about. Do you want to do the homeless, do the homeless?
Sure, I'll do the homeless tonight, too.
Okay, so at one point, we had a conversation about, there were just some, some questions about, you know, how are we addressing it, you know, what, what are our officers doing, something, you know, if you, and you were going to give a very, very, very brief recap of what, what your officers are doing.
Well, I posted this recently on our Facebook page because of a lot of comments that were going around on Facebook and us not dealing with things. The day that I was asked to do this about homelessness, to give you an example of what we do, is one of our sergeants, Sergeant Messerian, was able to, he felt that there may be a correlation between some homeless people living in the area and some break-ins on the East End. We had two or three storage sheds, all local businesses broken into. And so what we decided to do was, in that day, we did a walkthrough with the permission of Nova Cell, of their wooded lot that's kind of to the south of the building. It's kind of behind Union Street, and they found several camps. And I don't call them encampments, because encampments, to me, refers to large amounts of people. These are single, probably, person camps. We're working with Nova Cell. Part of that property is owned with CSX, and I believe there's a third property owner back there, the tool shop on Race. We're working to get those cleaned up. Nobody was found back there at the time. That same day, we dealt with people that were begging out at Walmart. They stated to the officers they were from Virginia, and that they were Romanian, and that they were passing through the area begging for money. And so the, the business owner was contacted. They did not want him on the property. They were told that they needed to leave, and they did. And then also, that same day, we received a call from a woman that lived on East Main Street. As she looked across the river, she was able to see a camp that was up along the river. The officers went and made contact with him. He was there. He had a small, I call it a horde going on there. He was warned to have 24 hours to leave, and he had a, he had a warrant for his arrest. So he was actually arrested for the warrant, and he was able to make contact with some friends that cleaned up most of it, and then the officers returned the next day, and it was fairly well cleaned up. So that kind of gives you an example of maybe, you know, a busier day of us, you know, dealing with the homeless. But generally speaking, when we come across somebody that we suspect to be homeless, we are going to try to get them help. And our officers have some really good knowledge of the resources available in our community to get them help, whether it be through Partners in Hope, which I'm involved in. It might be through Tri-County Mental Health. It can be through any number of churches. We try to get them help through the Buckeye House, through the Family Abuse Shelter. And so a lot of times, you know, especially if somebody complies with some of the laws that the homeless frequently run into, we are not going to arrest immediately. Part of the problem is, is a lot of those offenses are very minor. Most of, a lot of them are minor misdemeanors. So our park curfew, which we've enforced since I've been here, we are not going to allow people to be in the park without authorization after the park hours. Another thing is camping. We don't allow camping. We never have allowed camping in our parks. That was recently a part of a U.S. Supreme Court decision out of, was it Washington or Oregon, I believe?
Green Pass.
Yeah, and it was upheld that we could continue, and we've had that ordinance on the books forever. One of the other places we've run into homelessness is these RVs. A lot of times, they are not registered correctly, or they will be parked for extended periods of time. Again, we'll try to get people help first, but after so many warnings, if they continue to violate the laws and the parking regulations, we're going to take enforcement action to try to motivate them to maybe get these things corrected and to possibly move on. We've had calls asking for people to basically set up an area in the parks as a homeless tent city. I don't think anybody's interested in doing that, and that's how we use those laws to try to prevent that from happening. The same goes with the Conservancy District. So we will work with both private property and public property and use the laws we can. Some of the people that, that we deal with have hundreds of calls. One gentleman that is very prolific, that is homeless in this area, I looked up how many contacts law enforcement Miami County had had with him from February of 2023 to July of 2024, when I ran this. He had 102 contacts with law enforcement throughout the county, and I believe he had seven or eight arrests. And if you looked at the judicial part of it, he had served quite often 30 days, I think sometimes 90 days, but he gets out and he doesn't want the assistance. A lot of the bigger cities, I've read about them also using kind of the same situation for their larger homeless encampments that take up whole city parks. The city of San Francisco is doing basically the same thing we're doing, and they call it a carrot and step. So we're going to come out to this large homeless encampment with counselors. We're going to offer assistance, and those that don't take assistance, the next day, we're coming out and we're clearing the camp. We're taking the tents down. We're throwing away the garbage, which unfortunately is their personal belongings, but it's, they're given fair warning that we're going to be here tomorrow to clean this out. It's kind of what we do. We offer them help. Their statistics say 1 in 10 people accept help, and I would say that is probably accurate on how many people accept help in Troy. Not many, and we can't force them to accept help. Mental health and drug abuse is rampant in the people that we have problems with. We do come across homeless through some of the work we do that are just people that have a short-time problem, and then we never see them again. They're able to get through that hump, and we never see them again. They might not even get charged, but through some of our work in trying to, we do some volunteer work at the Presbyterian Church, serve in breakfast, and my work through Partners in Hope. We see that quite frequently, but we also have a group of people that we continue to deal with over and over and again and again. The standard for mental health is they have to be a threat of harm to themselves or others. Our officers are well versed in pink slipping people that have mental health issues. I didn't run those numbers, but it, we do it quite often these days. That gets them a three-day hold in the hospital if the doctor agrees with our pink slip. So the report that the officer writes on that medical form, the psychologist reviews it, if that psychologist reviews it, they can be held for up to three days, and then they're back out.
Is there any data on the population, either permanent or semi-permanent of the homeless that may be, I assume it's higher in the summer or less in the winter, perhaps?
I've heard numbers all over the place. I think the highest number I've heard of the permanent is about 30 in town that are, you know, more, they're dedicated to living on their own without assistance. And that's the highest number I've heard. I've heard probably the lower teens, too, from some of the surveys.
And do you know any percentage of them are military veterans at all?
I don't. I've never seen that.
Anyone else? Thank you very, very much. I apologize for the crisscross in information, and also thank you very much on behalf of Mr. Weaver, who came back several months ago and had an issue with somebody staying at the gazebo at the golf course. Apparently, you guys rectified that, and he hasn't been seen for several months, so hopefully he took whatever assistance was offered and will not return.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, any comments?
I just want to recognize these students from Miami East. Some of these girls have been here before. They obviously brought friends with them, and you picked a long one tonight. If you need extra credit, I'll find you a paper. Thank you for being here.
Mr. Tenderson?
Just a reminder that, as I mentioned earlier, the 11th, at 5:15, we start our annual budget workshop, Finance Committee meeting, since we know that's typically, it'll be in the basement. It's typically hour to two hours. We will then have regular committee meetings with whatever business needs to be recommended on the 13th at 6 o'clock, I'd imagine. It is Veterans Day on the 11th, but we are working. We do not have that holiday, so our trash and recycling will be as normal, and that's all I have.
But back to the meeting downstairs. 5:15. Don't shoot the messenger. I just got a question. They were inquiring why it's in the basement as opposed to maybe up here.
It's, there's a lot more flexibility down the basement. I always hate to use this, but I know that it's been that way for two decades, I think, or more, and we've always just done it in the basement. It seems to work well. We can spread out and have a presentation and talk.
Hopefully that'll satisfy them. Mr. Friggy?
I have nothing of the sort, Mr. Friggy.
Law Director, Mr. Kuber?
I have nothing as well. Thank you.
Mr. Seaver?
Oh, you're looking at Mr. Twist.
I'm seeing the true way.
You've been confusing me all night, Mr. Rozell.
Welcome to the club.
I want to thank everybody for coming on Saturday. It was very well attended, and I, we learned a lot, as always, with each one of these, and we're going to continue to do them, and hopefully the crowd continues to grow. There were, I don't know, probably three or four people that had been to one of those before, and so we appreciate everybody coming to the Ask a Councilmember meeting last Saturday. Secondly, just got to vote.
That's it? Mrs. Sne, so we don't confuse anybody else.
So I have no comments tonight.
Mrs. Westfall?
I have none.
Mr. Shelly?
I would emphasize Mr. Seaver's comments on voting. If you haven't voted, get out there tomorrow and make a choice. And it's very important for everybody to vote.
Mrs. Marshall?
I just want to say that I appreciate everybody who came tonight to talk about the dispensary and, you know, give your views. That's very much appreciated. Thank you for coming out.
I second that. We asked for a public comment, and we got a great number of people come out. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pierce?
Thank you, guys, for coming out and speaking. What's on your mind? Also, last week, we had a message concerning the downtown and some of the, we'll be happy on the streets and making sure that things were handicapped, accessible, and we performed some work in front of the courthouse already, that we're going to plan on kind of keep moving through towards downtown with. And I was able to connect with some people who were handicapped along the way, who had to use wheelchairs and walkers, and they seemed to be pleased with the work we've already done. So I would appreciate it if you guys keep us aware of any difficulty as well with the access to downtown. Thank you.
Mr. Twist?
No comment this evening.
I would just like to thank everybody that came tonight. Echo Mrs. Marshall's comments about giving your input, as well as the input you gave on Saturday for those that came there. They are very good. It's nice to see that we have continued to increase people coming, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
It's good discussions. I think the last two kind of ran past the hour, which wasn't a problem for anybody. Also, yes, go out and vote tomorrow. I'm sure Mr. Pierce and Mr. Norman would appreciate you doing that if you already haven't, and good luck to everybody, and hopefully, when you come back on the 25th, we will not be as chaotic, or I will not have it as messed up. Thank you very much.